You stand for the ledge.
Looks like it looked good.
You weren't home for that? That's a big fix.
I worked home, but I stopped later. Where did I go down here? Had some help, some free time.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessarily business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are available for everyone to review.
Oh, here comes Bob. Alright. So. So we have Bob Jones, Mike Peter, Jessica Van Horst, Brian Crossman, Latula, and Lucy Powers. And have everybody. I may know that everybody is here. Mike is our chair, so if you wish to speak tonight, please make sure you address any comments to Mike. And the minutes that need approval are from the last two meetings. So the regular meeting, which was May 14th, there was one edit within the road foreman's report section. I wrote treasurer twice about who that meeting was going to be with about the bridge. It was treasurer liaison. And then the other set of minutes that need approval are from the special meeting that you guys held on the 17th.
I hope that we approve those minutes, both of them.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. So we haven't, Peter and...
So Stephanie's here in person, here in the audience.
And Stephanie, thank you for coming down. I didn't recognize her.
That's okay, spend a minute.
And is Peter planning...
Peter coming virtually, or?
Uh, Peter would be attending virtually if he is available. Alright, well, he's not, I think that you can probably address most of the questions.
I'll do my best.
Sure. Would you make sure to wait for...
Would you prefer to wait for Peter a couple of minutes, or?
Um, we can get started. I'm really here at the pleasure of the board. I don't have a presentation. I'm here to support where you're at in the village sidewalk project.
Yeah. If it's okay, I might just do a little overview of where we're at with that. And then Stephanie is basically here to ask, answer any questions that folks have. So in, we did a scoping study back in 2021, 22 on this intersection here, which was funded by a grant. And Fosun O'Neal, who were the project, the people we hired for that project, put together a sort of overview of different sorts of sidewalks and crosswalks that we could do to help with this intersection. And when that happened, there were a lot of citizen involvement in that study. Probably a bunch of you in the audience were there for those meetings where we talked about what could happen with this intersection. And so out of that project, we then applied for a larger grant to actually create some sidewalks and crosswalks that were, that they did the higher level planning for in the scoping study. In summer of 2022, we got the grant for $500,000. And the select board has the paper in front of you with the amount that in the grant was anticipated for each of the items. It was anticipated that we would have about $32,900 of it in consultant charges. That's working with Rutland Regional Planning Commission as the people managing the grant. That's Stephanie. The design engineer was anticipated it would be about $65,000 for a total of 97 something. And then the remaining $402,000 would be for the, for working with the construction. So what's happened right now is that the cheapest we've been able to bring that design engineer in at has been $104,000, which is 40K above what was put in here. And when I brought this to the board about a month ago, there were some questions that folks had about like how we could proceed. And I didn't have answers to all of them, so I invited, it looks like Peter's here virtually. I invited Stephanie and Peter to come to, to answer any questions that the board might have about where we are in this project and how we, and how we can proceed. I know that one of the questions was, what do we do if the construction costs also run over? And would it be possible if the construction costs run over, could we construct a little bit less sidewalk to still come in with a budget? Those were some of the sorts of questions I remember that we had. And I opened it up to the rest of the board to, to ask the things that they were wanting to ask Peter and Stephanie.
I guess, I just have one question. I think Dad was going to look into it. But the question had come up. What kind of penalties we'd be facing potentially if we backed out of the project? As far as the grant, letting the grant go back? If we'd be penalized in any way?
So the Vtrans policy is that for projects that don't proceed, and Peter can back me up on this, that you would be required to repay the reimbursements that you've received to date. And possibly in addition to the reimbursements, Vtrans fees associated with administering the fund. So when you say penalties, I'm assuming you mean what are the implications or consequences of stopping the project at this point and returning the remaining, you know, and not utilizing the remaining grant funds?
Or being able to apply for grants down the road.
There's no indication that you are penalized or prohibited in any way from applying for future grants? But, you know, the implication would be for this particular grant, Vtrans policy is that you would, you know, be required to repay what you've been reimbursed to date. You know, the town is, is able to appeal that policy. And Vtrans handles those appeals on a case by case basis. But what I advise towns is that you should be prepared to repay what you've been reimbursed to date, should you opt to not proceed.
Even though everything that's happened has been out of our control? That's why we appeal it?
Yep.
What is there, a board that we would talk to?
Appeal to Vtrans, yeah. So in the grant, every grant program for Vtrans usually comes with a guidebook for when you set out to even apply for the funds. And there are, there are statements regarding this policy right in the grant application guidebooks. So you, you know, that information is available to applicants before you even receive a grant. My, so, you know, that's pretty standard Vtrans policy at this point, yeah.
So have you had anybody, any other towns back out and send the money back and then have to repay? Even when they go to, when they appeal it?
I have.
Now, do we know how much money we have to reimburse?
Well, we, on this page that I've given you, we have the total billed to date. This is how much, this is not necessarily how much we've gotten so far, but this is how much we have paid out for the project management. So it's $3,890.11.
But that wasn't grant money?
That is grant money.
Oh, that is grant.
Yes.
So we had to match 20% of that?
Yeah. So we would, I mean, we will match 20% of the total grant money. I'm not entirely certain how Julie is working it out with, if we match 20% of this, or if she waits until we get to the larger amount. But we do match 20% of it.
So the match is withheld with every reimbursement?
Okay, so the match has already been in there?
Yes. My, my, my numbers include your first quarter 2024 invoicing numbers in them, which you haven't been reimbursed for yet. So the total reimbursements to date are $3,112, less about $950, because you are eligible to be reimbursed $946.12 for first quarter 2024, but you've not submitted that reimbursement request yet.
Peter was starting to say something as well.
Go ahead, Peter.
Hi, how are you? I just had to drop off. Hi, I'm Pete Bojock. I'm with Vtrans Transportation, this whole assistant. And hello, board, nice to see you. Is Mike there?
Yes.
Hi, Peter. Good to see you again.
Long time no see. Um, just wanted to read away what Stephanie said and back that up. There is the chance that this could be asked to be returned, which you've been reimbursed, now, now, which you've actually spent to date for Stephanie's time. Also, that would be my time, I was just looking that up. If that, that could also be part of it. Our intent is to hopefully convince you to move forward, but if we can't, that, that has to tell me. Anyone who says that is actually in the grant agreement that they signed, all these stipulations on the repayment, there's a paragraph on paying these costs. And to go to the question of actual repayment being made, there are numerous projects that have had it. And I know of one personally that was granted a, didn't have to pay it back, but that was a lot farther. That was bill varieties that were out of their hand, meaning they had agreements for right of way from certain entities, but then backed out later, so the project just couldn't be done. So the due diligence was there.
Question.
Yes.
So one of the questions that I've remembered coming up was, what sort of suggestions do you have for towns like ours who were given the impression that we would be looking at a certain figure? And then now that we've gotten these proposals, they're way outside. And obviously, we've continued to work through it, and Jessica's been working so hard on it along with you. But so what sort of recommendations do you have for deal?
Yeah, well, it, it's been quite a while since that scope study was completed, probably close to, close to two years. And we don't know what's happened in the last couple of years. So what we've been doing, we have been finding the cost increase substantially in some cases. So you're not normally challenged, let in there. There is the option to come back later for additional funding. It could still be planned, not guaranteed. But we also decided that we could not, because of your application, we could not reduce the scope for this first part of the repaid project, because it basically, everything in the project met the criteria that you were granted for. So we, we looked at your grant application, we saw the post office, all the spots that you wanted to do in this first phase were a complete project that made a lot of sense. And so we weren't able to, when we first asked, we did not concur with reducing the scope. So, but there's not much we can do about inflation other than giving the option to move forward with this. And then you always have the option to come up with additional local funding if you have that available in your budget. And/or hope that we get a project that's defined and bid at a level that you can afford in this grant. And you could also, you could also apply for additional funding later on in a, in a later round. But again, there are other towns that have, have seen this exact issue. And we try to work as, as well as we can with the regulations and within our granting program to help you as we can.
Okay, so if we, if we get, if we go through the engineering costs and then we go and, and bid out to contractors and say, by the time we're done, we're looking at another $100,000 for this first stage, is there any way for us to get a grant to supplement this first stage, or?
Yep, well, so my point that works is we would accept an application from you in a future round that is, if that application is made after you've actually received all your easements. Because it looks like the project's going to really move forward. If you don't have your easements yet, you don't have your final design done, we don't go ahead and, and rent any additional funds until that time. That makes sense, we have, we do every year have anywhere from two to six additional funding applications. And based on the, how, how the project is moving forward and how ready you are, it's definitely a, a good indicator of how you're going to get, whether you're going to get some additional money. And that additional money would also be maybe 20. So for $100,000, you will be paying $20,000 back.
So I think what's...
So there's no guarantee, because it goes into the round every year for the new grant rounds.
So just to, just to clarify, what Peter's telling you is you don't have to wait until you're out to bid and you get back construction bids to apply for supplemental funding. You can apply for supplemental funding when you reach a critical milestone in the design phase, where you've actually completed your final design and you've secured any necessary right of way. Because at each of those kind of critical points in the design phase, you get not only a working set of plans, but you also get updated opinions of probable construction costs from your design engineer. So you, you kind of are kept as current as you can throughout the design process with how things are tracking price wise.
I'm sharing my screen right now, and I'm going to go down to the part where it talks about the process. And I'm going to go to the image, because it's a little easier to look at. And so we could see at what point we might be in the process that Stephanie was talking about. Okay, here's the detailed project schedule. I know it's a little small, but we've got...
I think you could zoom in and just show them that left-hand column.
Okay.
So once you get a consultant on board, we do what's called a project kickoff, where we, you know, make sure everybody's on the same page regarding the project scope and schedule. Then the consultant goes through what's really kind of a data gathering phase in order to get existing condition information for base mapping and survey. They then, we're then going to hold kind of an abbreviated or combined local concerns and alternatives public meeting. These were steps that were taken during the scoping phase and held on two separate meetings. But now we've actually done all of that scoping legwork. We have a concept that is now advancing into actual engineered designs. So we're going to kind of revisit all of that with the public at a combined local concerns and alternatives presentation to share with folks kind of where things are headed in the design phase. Then the first set of plans that you'll get are conceptual, kind of 25% complete. You'll then use that information to get, get through all of your NEPA clearance, your environmental clearance for the project. And then upon conclusion of that, you'll get a next set of plans that are preliminary, more like 60%.
25 here.
Pardon?
Preliminary plans, it looks like we're looking at summer of 2025.
Correct, yeah, yep. With the preliminary plan set, you can then kind of get all of the right of way needs taken care of, whether that, that includes any temporary easements needed during the construction phase or any permanent easements needed for either slope or actual infrastructure. Then once you get through the, the right of way and your final design, that's where, the final designs are like your 80, 80%, 80, 90% plans. That's where, you know, Peter's telling you, you can apply for supplemental funding at that point.
And it looks like the final designs would be in late 2026 by this, by this...
Sure. What was the kickoff date in that schedule, Jessica?
The kickoff date was June of this year.
Right. So you, of course, take this schedule and you push it out every day that the kickoff doesn't, you know, occur.
Right.
So it's possible that you'd be in a position, and you know, the big wild card in this whole schedule is, is the environmental review. That process, just it, because of the nature of it, not necessarily because it's complex, but it just, it takes, it's, it's taking six to eight months.
So is that this section here that I'm highlighting is the environmental review?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that's what's happening through most of 2025?
Yes. So once you get through kind of your conceptual plans with all of the documentation necessary for that environmental review, once you go through that submittal, the project kind of hits a lull. You know, typically while you work through the environmental piece. There are some things that you could be advancing on in the background based on, you know, consultation and approval from Peter and Vtrans, but typically you kind of hit a lull. So, you know, this schedule is, you know, a working schedule, but ideally you'd want to have your right of way and final plans buttoned up such that you could apply in that year for supplemental funding. And those applications, Peter, those applications are usually come out in the late fall? Yes?
Actually, we're looking at 26, right? So if you move over a little bit, you would hopefully have right of way. It's pretty fast. Um, our application for the light fence program goes out, yeah, the evergreen is normally in early April, and we get the applications in mid-June. So we're almost, we're almost through this year's cycle. So you're looking at, I think we swing back and get it. And for some reason, you were able to, before the June, middle of June date in 26, have your certificate of right of way clear, then yeah, you certainly could apply in 26.
Well, I mean, I see that right of way here is over about, what, eight months or so? How many right of ways are we going to have to get for this project? Probably not that many.
I won't know until, until they do their design work and they determine the extent of the impact for, you know, grading and things like that. Because there may be impacts that extend beyond your right of way that aren't going to be permanent. But because they're temporary in nature, that would require, you know, a right of way from, from the property owner during the construction phase, that still require, you know, that still takes some time.
We were talking about this a month ago. And really, the only private properties that this would go past would be that one little house on the corner. I think that's what we were saying, so.
We've got this store property, right? Can I bring you to the crossing?
I don't think this, I don't think this phase of the project, Peter, comes down in school. This is School Street, right?
Yeah, it doesn't come down, just the crosswalk. So I don't know if to construct the crosswalk, we would need to get permission from Max Market.
It's up on the bridge, it's all state, right?
Yeah, the bridge is all state property.
State.
So Peter, would they, would they need their Section 1111 permit to apply for supplemental funding?
You have to have right of way clear.
So that would, that would require getting the Section 1111 permit?
No. Right of way clear is not, is not include the right of way permit. It's all, because you're moving towards the 1111 permit.
Okay. So I guess the bottom line is there may be opportunities in this schedule to expedite, shorten the timeframe for things. But, you know, and that's what we monitor closely as we work through the earlier phases in the design process.
Frank?
So hinging on the right of way, wouldn't it be prudent to find out if the right of way where many parties would be available first? Because each stage, if we're seeing here, is an increased cost that goes against the grant.
You're going to have a sense of that in conceptual. You're going to have a sense for those impacts right at the very first plan set, in the conceptual plans.
So I'm highlighting this bit here. This is where we would have a sense of whose right of ways would be affected?
Uh, the conceptual plan.
Conceptual plan.
Yes.
So at what cost have we arrived at against the grant at, to that stage?
Well, the design is $100,000, so that'd be 20.
I mean, we won't have done all of the design though, because at that point, they won't have done all of this stuff below it. So, I mean, their $100,000 takes us all the way through...
Oh, so they'll do parts of that?
This, this whole thing is their $100,000. So I assume that if we got hung up here in the conceptual plans, which is like the third thing out, they won't remotely have spent the $100,000 yet. Is that correct, Stephanie?
So if you, if you look at their proposal, there's a...
I'll go up to where the...
And the fees itemized by task. So you can have a sense for...
Let me find that.
What they've budgeted by task.
Fees itemized by task. Okay, here we are. So we've got, I'm going to go back and forth a little bit. The first task is $2,300.
No.
No?
No. There's no subtotals in those lines.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, yeah.
So I'm, I'm just trying to make sure everyone can see this. Okay, so we're going up through conceptual plan set development, basically up through here.
Right. So you can see in their proposal what they've, what they've budgeted for hours?
So up through about this point here where I've highlighted is how far we would have get, would have gotten.
Correct.
So...
Yeah. And you won't know all of your impacts right of way until you get your NEPA document, because there may be some changes that are caused by that NEPA document that could change your right of way requirements. We go back over to the left there and look at, then the right of way... Yeah, so go back down.
Here, okay.
Yeah, right there you go. Yeah, right of way plan.
Right of way plans. So here's where we're at with right of way plans.
Correct. And that's what starts your final negotiation. And that's where you would know what your right of way impacts are for sure.
Yes. But you do get a sense for what the engineer is seeing as early as the conceptual.
Correct.
So by that time, you're a hundred some odd thousands in, and to back out?
No, the total fee is $104,000.
Right.
So you, you're about...
That engineer's contract, it'll take you, they have, they have worked in all three phases of the project.
You want to show something different, so...
Okay, where do I want to go and look at?
The labor summary, Jessica, if you go down to the bottom, the way these are structured, what you're seeing in those columns are direct labor costs. They don't include the overhead, so...
Alright, let's go find it then.
I don't know, I don't know in this one if they've got it broken out with a fully loaded rate?
I'll check.
By task?
I'll stroll back up and we'll see if we can find that.
Yeah, I think it does.
I think it does.
Should have it in there.
Oh, that's just... Okay, here we are. This is it? This is it?
Yes.
Oh, that's what I'm looking for. Okay, I was in the wrong place.
There you go. The cost proposal summary.
Okay, so here we are. Ah, I'm sorry, it keeps on jumping around for me.
Don't get on it. Yeah, if you go down through bonus seven, is probably where you're going to be, if you're going to know what your right of way. And again, it's a timing thing. If you're, if you're discussing whether you're going to go for additional funding later on, then you certainly, it's the schedule, the dates that make the most, you know, difference. Whether you lose a year in your, in, in, in your ability to ask for additional funding because of the way the grant rounds are in, in April.
So, and also the, the way the contract works, if we're going down that project and then all of a sudden we hit a snag, that's where... that's where we stop? We don't have to pay the total?
That, that is, well, it depends on how your contract is, is structured. Um, correct. They're not going to continue working if you do that, unless they do.
Like if someone won't give us right-of-way?
So we get down to, say, 4.0 for, and at 4.0, we hit a snag, that means we can't move on. We only have to pay down through 4.0. We don't have to pay the rest of the contract price.
I got it. I got it. So what would happen then, Mike? Say, if we paid them 50 grand?
Yep.
We decided to stop, they're not going to give us the 50 grand back, and then the state's going to want the 50 grand.
You're going to want the 50 grand then, because you're not, you're not going to get...
Get it back out of it.
Not with the state.
But I'm just saying, the, the state will want that 50 grand because we spent it.
And the engineer's going to keep it.
Yeah, I mean, I think what Peter's telling you is you, this is a reimbursable grant, so you're going to be paying these expenses along the way. We submit reimbursement requests for the project quarterly. So, you know, if at any point in the project, the town hits the stop button and decides not to proceed, you know, you will have already paid presumably all the fees to date, and V-Trans would then, you know, has the ability under your contract to circle back with you with an invoice to seek recovery for anything that they had reimbursed you, the 80% that they had reimbursed you to date.
So that if we bail, if we get into this project, parts of way into this project, and we bail out, then everything is on our back. We get zero funds from V-Trans.
Correct. Unless your waiver is approved. You could choose to appeal, and they may grant you a waiver, but there's no guarantee of that.
Uh, through, through conceptual, it's just under 33,000. If, if that's where you could conceivably pull the plug because you know more information.
Versus 3,000.
Yeah.
Right, but that's, that's double, because you're not going to get the money back from the engineer. So he's going to keep the 33, and then V-Trans, or wherever we got the grant from, is going to want their 33 back. Or 80% of the...
But presumably, you would have been paid that. You wouldn't have to pay them back double. You will only have to repay what V-Trans has reimbursed you for.
Right, but if, if you paid us 30,000 for the engineer, the engineer's going to keep that 30,000 if we stop it, right? And then they're not going to give us the 30,000 back to give back to the grant. We're going to have to come up with another 30,000 to repay the grant. Correct?
80%.
You, you already did it, but you've already...
Right.
That's why you're being asked to repay it, because you've already, you've already been...
Correct, correct, correct. Yeah.
It doesn't double out.
You shouldn't have to find it. It should be in your account.
Frank?
We'd have to... So, correct me if I'm wrong, but at each stage of the phase that we saw coming down in a slide or two ago, is an additional cost at each step, which means the bailout price goes up with each one. And all that may be primarily the only fly in the ointment is if you can or cannot get the easement where the landowner is not going to grant that easement. So it'd be more prudent to find out ahead of time if that was, the owner was maybe for the project or against the project to... Because that kills the deal, and it has, and if it, and if the only option is to appeal, if the deal's killed and it's on the, the rulings from V-Trans as to whether or not they're going to give you the ability not to have to pay the grant back. So, uh, I don't know. It sounds like what, how it spells out. And we don't know what the numbers are, because you don't know when you're, when, when you're going to hit the spot where you're saying, geez, what are we doing this, and when does this, does this easement kick in or not? Where you can get it or not.
Yeah, um, I'm just thinking, we're, we're talking a lot about bailing out, and I, and I understand that. I've, you know, been through similar things in this building. But, um, I, I think more, more importantly is that if you reach a snag, I mean, the idea would be to figure out a way to get through it, to work with, um, work with the, planning, regional planning commission, um, work with each other, work with the engineer, and find out what we can do to make it work, rather than, um, talk, you know, them being so concerned about bail. I, I understand that bailing out, you don't want to end up having to pay back $500,000 or something like that. But I, I think there's a lot of ways we could work together with, with these folks and get through whatever snags we run into.
Frank?
The critical bailout, which it makes it totally inevitable that you have to, is the landowner not being agreeable to the easement period.
Did this come up during the scoping?
But we don't have a part of the budget, so that's not the catch 22, right? You don't know if you can design out certain aspects of the impacts to the landlord that is not able to the project. And you know, I mean, there's always, and I hate to say it, but there's always evidence domain also that would get you out of that.
But I think Jessica's mentioned that during the scoping phase, I mean, this was one of the evaluation criteria when you looked at all the different alternatives during the scoping phase for all of the sidewalk improvements kind of in this village area. So if everyone, I mean, Jessica did a nice recap at the beginning, we're basically starting with Phase 1 of that larger sidewalk infrastructure, um, project area that was looked at in the scoping phase. And didn't you just say that there was like one private property owner within this first? That was your recollection, or...
As far as I can recall, there's really, within this first phase, there's, it only goes past one private property owner that I can think of.
Okay.
And I'm sure that when the scoping study was done, that was a consideration that they looked at. And also, I'm just reminding everyone that when we did the scoping study, like I said before, a lot of people showed up and gave buy-in to it. I don't know if the property owner of that particular property showed up to give buy-in, but a lot of other folks who live in this area right around here did show up and were pretty supportive of the idea of building sidewalks. So...
But at this point, we don't even know if there are going to be any right-of-way impacts on that property. Like, you won't have a sense of that until you start, like, to at least the conceptual.
So would I be correct in assuming that what Frank's suggestion is of going and talking to the landowners before we proceed?
I think it's premature.
Is not, would not work?
I, I, I mean, there's nothing wrong with indicating to someone that your, your property lies within the project corridor, um, you know, and having some early conversations. I mean, that's the, the local concerns and alternatives presentation public meeting. That's an excellent opportunity to have those conversations. Um...
Yes. Yes, I agree completely. That's, that's where you can reach out to those landowners and say, please come to the meeting. We'd love you to see what we're doing. Um, please ask any questions. And we don't, don't get what the impacts are going to be, but it could be an impact, and we'd like for you to have as much of, you know, have it put in the process.
So Kristen is kind of pointing out time to me.
It's 7:40, so just to put that...
Yeah. And can I just recap kind of where we are here? So in, we, we're, we're not even anywhere near any of this work, because we're still in just procuring a consultant. That's the, that's the phase of the process that we're in. Um, there are two methods to procure. There's a V-Trans at the ready, which is kind of a pre-qualified track. The town took that method first and, and requested proposals from two different consultants under that track. Were not happy with either of those results, which led us to more of a open kind of competitive procurement method where we put out a request for qualifications. We received statements from two firms, narrowed those down to the one that we requested a scope of work and fee for, which you, which is what Jessica has been sharing tonight. So we're kind of at the point in the process where the town, in terms of next steps, the town needs to decide if they're going to procure a design consultant or not.
And if we decide not to procure a design consultant, the project ends.
Correct.
We don't build sidewalks and crosswalks. That intersection stays exactly the way it is right now.
Correct. Yeah.
Charlie?
Uh, but the only fact that we have so far is that the engineering bid came up 60, 70% higher than what we expected it to come up with. There's been no other hurdles that we discovered that seem to be showstoppers. So it's that, and the construction could, but there's probably some choices to make during the design that might mitigate some of the costs in the construction phase.
If I understand correctly, and again, Stephanie and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we get to this part here of the conceptual plans, they will present us probably, will they present us with several art alternatives?
So back up, the local, so with...
Ah, I see. Alternatives presentation.
Yes. So you've essentially kind of provided a preferred alternative at the end of your scoping effort for all of the sidewalk improvements. This first phase of those includes the bridge. We've learned through this procurement, design procurement process, that that bridge adds considerable potential cost to your project, and it's a state bridge. It's not even a town bridge. So I think where you'll see some potential alternatives deviating from the preferred alternative that was selected in your scoping study is related to the bridge, how you're going to navigate the bridge. So that's an opportunity for, you know, the, the town to express a desire for, you know, cost savings, cost control options with your design consultant.
Um, last meeting that we had where we talked about this, Bob brought up the idea that he's seen in some other towns where they have, instead of just a, instead of a sidewalk, they have, I don't know what they're called, but they stick up and they bend when vehicles go over them, and they cause safety for pedestrians, but they wouldn't be, they wouldn't really narrow, if a truck went over them, they would be okay.
So Jessica, did the board receive a copy of this proposal? So you should have noticed in the assumptions page of this proposal that this particular consultant assumes that there will be no load-bearing alternative across the bridge. That's what their design is based on, because there's no bridge investigations or any of those kinds of associated costs included in this proposal. So, you know, those, when you get to that local concerns and alternatives presentation, kind of leading up to that, the consultant will come back with what they're thinking, right? They're going to, they typically will provide you with a draft of the presentation, or at least a draft of the different alternatives that they're going to be sharing at the meeting. So that's where you start to really kind of get your arms around what is the engineer thinking might be suitable options for the bridge. And that's your opportunity as, you know, representatives of the town to say, you know, well, what about something like this? We'd really like, you know, what are the pros and cons? Is this some, you know, if, if you have a strong preference for something, that's your, you know, leading up to that meeting, that's, that's where we'd start to want to hear that kind of input, to inform the alternatives that the consultant will be basically vetting. And then once you get through that, that task, that they will develop in the conceptual, in the conceptual plans, what's kind of agreed to, um, at, at the outcome of that local concerns and alternatives milestone.
Right. And at conceptual, at preliminary, at final, you get updated, um, opinion of probably the construction cost. Any two of those pages.
So what are the things that I see we're looking at right now? We're looking at $100,000 or $100 and some thousand dollars for engineering costs for a sidewalk and, which would design a sidewalk up to the church, a crosswalk down to Max, across the bridge, and then another crosswalk to the...
A crosswalk to the post office, and then a crosswalk where the sidewalk has gone up to the church, a crosswalk across 133.
Across there.
Yeah. And some kind of, something along the bridge. Not a sidewalk, but something that's non-load-bearing.
And...
It's a total of 565 feet worth of sidewalks that we'd be doing.
And what the consultants have all said, and people that are familiar with this type of stuff, they feel that that would definitely slow down traffic, because then with the crosswalks across the road, that would, that we'd be able to post flashing signs and stuff, which would tend to make people more aware, so it would be a safer intersection, and from traffic studies experts.
Yeah, that's what I remember most clearly from the scoping study and the meetings we had about two, two and a half years ago, was that a lot of folks who came in here, some were concerned about walking, like Kristen and myself, who walk through this intersection frequently, and I know a couple of you others who live in this area probably walk through the intersection, but more people who came to the meeting were saying, I drive through this intersection. I pull out a Max, and people are coming around that corner like, whoa, and it's very dangerous. And so I think that that feedback led the consultants we had before to consider this plan, which would also, like you said, might help slow down the traffic. Also, we know that once we have done, if we are able to be successful in doing this project, once it's done, we can petition the state again to lower the speed limit in this area, which they haven't been willing to do before, because we would have made a major change to this intersection. Is that correct, Peter?
That, that sounds correct, but there's a lot of stages and, um, what else there? But, um, you're definitely going down the road of making this a safer intersection for pedestrians for sure.
And the other part of this project is if we, once we get the design study done, the engineering design, as we move forward to this, we can, if we see that there's more money necessary, we can start the project to get more money in at a 20% match.
Also, also, I want to point out, um, so I've had the conversations with Julie over the past few weeks about that unexpected money that we needed for the bridge project. And, and Julie, jump in if I'm wrong here, but it turns out that in a number of our funds, we've been running surpluses over the last several years. And so we do have some funds, both in the highway budget and in the general fund, that by like the rules of good accounting, we shouldn't just let sit there. We should spend them for projects that will help the town. And, um, that fixing that bridge was one of them. But I, I assume, Julie, that some of that surplus could also go toward something like additional money that might be needed for this sidewalk project.
I think that that makes sense, that there, that's an effective spend-down tool is like one-time big projects, and this is another one-time big project.
Go ahead.
So I know we're looking at the bridge and then the sidewalks and the town garage, and altogether, that looks kind of scary, but I think it's really, really important that we don't put those in competition with each other, because we all want the same thing, which is to be, it shouldn't be impossible to have a walkable downtown polit and a working town garage and a bridge that doesn't fall down into the river. These are all things we should be able to have and should all want. And I hate to see one project be the reason another one falls when we could basically work and make them all work together. And I'm very concerned that divisions might form about what we should do with our funds, and we might lose one project because another project needs to be done. They all need to be done.
And many times towns know that this is a three- or four-year process, so they're planning starting now at, say, you know, quarter of what, when you get to those conceptual plans, and if they're, if it looks like you're going to be starting to get over budget, that's when you start planning, you know, the, the following two to three years, to say, go at town 80 for an extra 25,000 each time. Or, you know, and that's been done on numerous projects where they're forward-looking, they know this is a good project, and they've taken the initiative... taken the initiative to budget for that over a few different years.
Okay, so we really need to wrap this up right now. How soon do we need to vote on this?
If we could vote tonight, that would be great. The longer, like Stephanie said, the longer we wait, the longer, if we're going to do it, the longer it's going to take, right? I'm willing to make a motion right now that we accept this VHB bid.
Does anybody on the board want to second that motion? A second of the motion doesn't mean that you're going to vote in favor of it, it means that it goes up to a vote, otherwise it becomes a dead, a dead motion. If we don't have any second on it, it becomes dead, and I'd like to see some alternatives. If someone, you know, if you're just flat-out against it, I guess, then you're flat-out against it, or if you're in favor of some alternatives. I mean, to just say no without alternatives seems kind of counterproductive for as far as we've gone.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, so Jessica made a motion that we accept this VHB pedestrian scope, engineering is 1,400.
Um, yeah, it's 104,688.
Is there any more discussion on this?
Sue has.
Sue has one question.
I just want to say, I, I used to live in the village, and I used to work in this building, and so I've been across, back and forth across the intersection many, many times. I, you know, my grandmother's funeral was in the church, and we walked, you know, up to the cemetery. It's always been dangerous, you always had to be real, you know, alert and light on your feet, and not everybody is, you know, 25 anymore. I, I think it's a very important project to at least look into for safety reasons and, and walkability, but mostly for safety reasons in this town, that's all I can say.
Well, I have little to no faith in the numbers, because when you estimate 60,000 and the bid actually comes through at well over 100, I really don't have much faith in it. I just know that we need to do something to slow the traffic down through town, and maybe this will be a step forward, but I think we need to watch our finances. It's just $104,000 to draw pictures of what we need to do up here is ridiculous. That's a lot of taxpayer money. I have taxpayers that are totally frustrated because they keep getting higher and higher tax bills, and we're talking about spending more here for them, so I'd like to discuss, but we need to do something up here to slow traffic down. I don't know if this is the answer, but we need to do something.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
I would just suggest that as you are contemplating your next steps, that if you feel that you can do something that will cost you out-of-pocket less than your local match for this current grant, then by all means, you know, I think it would be a financial, a more prudent financial choice to go in a different direction, but if ultimately what the town wants to see in that location is what was selected as the preferred alternative at the end of your scoping effort, then just keep in mind, you're paying only 20%. So if you forfeit the grant, anything else that you want to do in that location, you're paying 100%.
And I'll just point out that the 20% match that we're using is from the ARPA funds, which we got from the federal government, which is not technically the taxpayer funds. I know that that means that we spend the taxpayer funds on something else, but we can, with this project at least, we can say to the taxpayers that we aren't using their money on this project. We are using their money on the bridge over there, but, yeah.
We appreciate it.
Thanks.
The one thing to change in bottom line after this series is difference in our initial numbers, and that was the basis, basically, what people went along with, and that increase has made a little bit of a question as to whether or not it's going to be other increases. Like Peter mentioned, if you can't get the easement, you can use them in a domain, you have a legal request in order to do it, to seize that area. So there's some numbers that I, are, are missing, and there's questions if we answered on that, and I don't know who can answer them, to clarify his bottom concerns.
So, right now we have this message?
I think that someone else had a hand up.
Lauren?
I just want to, I just think it's good to think about in terms of being 20 cents a dollar, though, of cost, if that's significant, like the grant. I think that's something that can't be ignored, and this is, this is, this is an accident waiting to happen, you know, everybody knows it, and to think about pulling back at this point, having made this investment, and then coming up with an alternative is going to take more time and more money and without a grant. I just, that makes me very nervous, too.
It's not going to cost less in the future.
I also, I'll, I'll just, I'll just mention very briefly, that, that is a state highway, and that we as a town can't just spend our money to do something on the state highway without going through a process like this that the state requires for state highways. I mean, if we could just put a crosswalk across it, I'd do it, but I, I for sure would, I'd paint a crosswalk across there and put up a light.
So, right now, let's have a vote on the motion that's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I'll break the tie, and I'll vote in favor. Motion carried.
All right, and before, thank you Stephanie for coming, thank you Peter for coming.
Thank you Peter, Stephanie.
Before we head out, Stephanie?
Did you have that?
I have this for you. My scanner wouldn't work, so I printed it out and signed it a while ago, and then...
No problem.
There you go.
No problem. In the future, self-help photo?
Will work fine? Okay, thank you for letting me know.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
All right, Peter, I'm going to stop sharing the screen.
So I'll just circle back following tonight's meeting with some additional documentation to then seek approval from D-Trans to make the award, okay? All right, thank you so much.
Sorry that took so long, Mike, but...
Okay, well, we needed to deal with it.
Needs discussion.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Zoning administrators report, Nancy, oh Nancy's here!
Did you have any announcements? Did you want to announce anything about the school street bridge?
Oh, do we have any idea when they feel...
Yeah, so they're, the bridge is going to have to be completely closed now, so I had talked with Matt, and we decided to wait until after school is out.
Okay.
So that's what, they're ordering all the supplies that they need, materials, make sure that stuff's all ready to go, once they do close the bridge, but that's the...
And they'll try and give us a week or two notice so we can get the information out, okay?
Yeah, he's just, right now, he's just sourcing all the materials that he needs to do it, and as soon as he has that figured out, he'll let us know. But it will be after school is...
Okay.
...out for the summer, but...
And then, and we're looking at a six-week window.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Oh, there's a question.
We have questions about this school street bridge, are, is there going to be a discussion in public comments?
About the school street bridge?
Yes, that's what the bridge is just speaking about.
Yeah, we'll talk about it some more in, during the road foreman's report, too, if you want, to bring up any questions. During the road foreman's report, we can talk about it.
At the end of this meeting?
Yes, during this meeting, yes.
A couple minutes. In a couple minutes.
In a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Nancy, would you like to read your report, please?
If not, I have it.
I agree, and yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
So, we have 14 permits that have been issued year-to-date. I've completed the past 20 years of zoning document scans, and I will continue to work on those as I'm allowed. The final notice to obtain a permit for storage boxes was sent out last week. I have approximately 30% of the property owners that have come into compliance. It's been a challenging project. I have urged people that have had an issue with the bylaws to come to the planning commission, to attend the planning commission, because that's where those bylaws are initiated. And again, this is not a new bylaw, however, nobody ever showed up for any of those meetings. And then finally, I am attending a BLCC training session Thursday that will talk about the importance of the environmental court in the state of Vermont and its function, and also provide status of current legislation relating to local and zoning and development. And that completes my report.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy? Thank you, V.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Nancy's house was vandalized, and I don't think that we're the kind of town where people who disagree with a zoning administrator should go vandalize their home.
Exactly. She's doing a job that was laid out by the town, by the townspeople, everybody has input on all those rules, and if they don't like it, they need to come to the meetings, don't do a cowardly act like vandalizing someone's house. I'm very sorry to hear that, too. Anything else? Thank you very much, Nancy.
You're welcome, thank you.
Planning commission, do you have a...
Yes, yes, I do. The planning commission met last night, I'm sorry I didn't get you a written report, but I can give you a verbal report. We thought we were going to have a short meeting because it was Memorial Day, and we only had one thing to do, but it took us a little longer than anticipated, but we got it done. We have approved the current batch of bylaw updates, the ones that are designed to sort ease back on some of the restrictions on setbacks and lot coverage, and make it a little easier for folks to build housing and, and businesses for economic development. So we approved that bylaw, and it's now, that bylaw update, it's now going to go through the process of hearings. So we also wrote and approved a report that the planning commission writes about the current bylaw update, like how, specifically how it supports the goals in the town plan. So we wrote and worked on and approved that last night, and we also wrote and worked and approved, on and approved a report about how the bylaw repeal petition, which also has to move forward at the same time, about how it fulfills the goals of the town plan, or doesn't fulfill the goals of the town plan, as the case may be. So we have those two reports ready, we have scheduled both of those hearings, so there will be back-to-back on the same night, hearings on repealing the bylaws entirely, and on doing a new amendment to them that incorporates a bunch of things the planning commission has been working on for a few years. And that is going to be at our July meeting, which is the 22nd. I'm going to be sending out, we have to send out all this, this report and the, and the bylaw update and the repeal petition to, to our, all of our abutting towns, we have to send it to their planning commissions or their town clerks, if they don't have planning commissions, and we have to send it to Rutland Regional Planning Commission and to the state. So we're starting the process of going through that approval. This will be a lot like we just did the town plan this year. First, the planning commission does, publicizes it and does a hearing. Once that's done, we'll make any changes that come up because of the hearing, and then we will send it to the select board. So the select board will be seeing this probably in July, late July, early August, and then the select board will have to go through its own process of warning a hearing for these two items. So that's, that's what the planning commission is up to.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the planning commission report? Okay. Road foreman's report.
All right, so just a quick little introduction, our highway foreman Damon is back there, so...
Hi Damon.
Thank you.
Hello Damon. Um, and there is a report, so over the last several weeks, the highway department finished the grading on, it kind of consolidated a little bit, so they graded Tadmer, Deer Run, Andrew Strive, Beaver Brook, Robinson Hill, Towesley Hill, Cemetery Hill, Rupert Hill, Hickory Hollow, Warren Switch, and Briar Hill. Calcium was sprayed on all graded roads. They continued to haul stone and performed road maintenance, which included filling potholes, maintaining ditches, and weed trimming. Damon also met with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission regarding culverts. A road sign which was in question a couple of, or last meeting, has been repaired. Brush and trees were cleaned up from snowstorms. One of the trucks was brought over to Scott Shaw for work. The airline was fixed on one of the tailgates. Upcoming projects is more grading, and that's going to be on Bets Bridge, Chuck Clark, Hetherington, Bauer Road, and Sawmill. And once grading is complete, the highway department will start to begin ditch work. So lots of activity happening in the highway department, thank you guys.
Any questions regarding that?
Oh, sorry, my last item is that the grants and aid program received our letter of intent, so Pollet is anticipated to receive $12,000 for the grants and aid program for this year, and an official grant agreement should be coming soon. And once we get that official agreement, we can start planning the work that we'd like to do.
Great, thank you. Sue?
We've got the speed sign up on Rupert Hill Road, down toward the bottom of Rupert Hill Road, and so if you want to put it somewhere else, maybe you want to move it before the bridge gets closed, and also it's in sort of a, I don't care, you know, but it's in sort of a funny spot, because you're going uphill, and it, and nobody goes over 30 that I know of going that way, so if you could turn it around, you could go there. Anyway, we got the sign up there, if you want to do anything with it, that's the most of the time.
Thanks.
Maybe, not to interrupt, but maybe what we should do is decide tonight where it's going to go.
Yeah.
You know, where do we want to put it next, that way we're not...
Taking it down and not doing...
Or wondering what to do next.
I've heard some feedback about having it reinstalled on Route 30, so it was taken down because we received a complaint about having it up on a state road, but I believe that if it's installed on a pre-existing post or something, it might be less of a problem. I can look back into that.
Yeah, did we end up getting the permit for that? Because we had to message them.
Getting the permit, and they were supposed to send us pre-approved site plans, and I went back through and reminded them, and the site plans never came through, and...
Well, maybe we just put it up, and see if someone complains again.
I mean, maybe if it's not in a post inside of the tire, like if it's on a more legit, you know? I mean, I'm against the post in the tire, you know, I think that's good, but maybe if it's up on, you know, like a speed sign, or a telephone, I'm like, uh-oh, who, what's it, not a telephone pole.
It's a power pole.
Sorry, power pole, not a power pole. Anyway, I think there's just been some requests to put it back up on Route 30. That's all I have to say.
How far off the side of the road do you have to have it?
I can look into that.
So, all right, so it looks like we'll move it?
I will.
Okay.
Anywhere else. The, the others, there's one in West Pollet.
Uh-huh.
There's still one on the North Pollet Road. There is another one on Kelly Hill Road, I believe. There was, right?
It's in a shed in the barn.
That's probably the one.
Yeah, there's one on the shelf there.
Okay, well, we should get that one off that shelf, too.
We just have to tell them where to put it.
There was one on 133, which was a great, also a nice location, right up, like, also a state highway. But I mean, that's where people fly.
That's where people's speed is coming down that curve.
On the paved roads, up on that road. Anyway.
So we'll just, we'll find a new home for it, I guess, and just pick a spot, I guess, wherever he, wherever the road foreman feels like he wants to put it.
This is the road foreman.
Anything else for the road foreman's report? Martha, Martha, you wanted to ask a question about the bridge down here?
Well, a couple of things. There are 15 or 16 households of Pollet on that side of the bridge, and if you're actually making the decision to close that bridge for six weeks, it's going to be a terrific inconvenience for 16 households. I'll just give you an example, for us to go, use the Rupert Mountain Road, get down to Rupert, take the mountain road over Mount Anton, come down to Route 30, and then come up to Max Market, it's going to take me 50 minutes, 5:00, to make that... me 50 minutes, 5:00, to make that trip, and then I've got to get home the same way. So I'm not speaking just for myself, but there are 15 other households that are going to be doing this. So I certainly understand the advantage of increasing the width of that bridge. It'll be very helpful to farmers and other people with big equipment. But can you think of some way to accommodate those of us during the six weeks? Could there be a passenger bridge so that we can walk across? Will we be able to walk across while they're working on the bridge? If not, can you install some kind of temporary walkway so we can get across?
It's, it was a very difficult decision to make, to close it for six weeks, but after reviewing every, all that we went through with the construction company, it was by far the best option. We're very sorry that it causes you a great, and the other 16 houses, a great inconvenience. But we feel that this time, the six weeks, will justify, in the end, the far superior bridge and life expectancy of that bridge when it's done.
So do we know, will we be allowed to walk across the bridge?
No, no. Once the bridge goes under construction, it'll be, you know, it'll be, you'll have to keep out, it'll be a safety area.
Okay. So is there anywhere else along there where you could construct a temporary bridge or have Daniel?
Now, it's, it would be cost prohibitive to, then you open up yourself to a whole bunch of liability, constructing a temporary bridge, and an incredible amount more cost, and we've already incurred much more cost than we expected in this project, because the bridge was more deteriorated than it appeared. So we, we don't feel that, that any of that, any extras, we just need to push through the six weeks, and it's unfortunate, and I understand, and I wouldn't want to be in a situation like that, but there is alternatives, so it's not like you're absolutely, you know, stranded.
So yours, Rich Hewitt was saying a few minutes ago that this is going to start after school is out. Do we have a date? Because we have to make plans. We have grandchildren coming to visit from Montana.
Well, as soon as they have procured all the appropriate materials and have a timeline laid out for us, we'll get that posted as quick as possible, so you should have a few weeks' notice on when that bridge will be shut down.
We need enough notice to cancel airplane reservations, for instance. If they, if they're going to be coming.
It's not like you're not going to be reachable. It's an extra half an hour.
It's an extra 5:00 to get to Max Market. Almost an hour for me to get to Max Market, and almost an hour to get back home.
Okay, I.
And to the library, and to town meetings.
I understand that, and truly, this is a big consideration for the board. But in order to do this bridge the most effective way, this is how we needed to do it. We wanted to try and do it so we could accommodate you, but it didn't work out that way, and all the residents up on that road. It's unfortunate that it's, that's going to make such a big detour on, to get through this six weeks. But they, they have a good reputation, and I'm sure that they will get it done in the six weeks like they say.
So are we thinking around June 13th? Is that what we're thinking?
Some point at the end of school, but we can't say for sure until they have procured all the necessary components to redo the bridge.
But it'll be after June 13th?
It definitely, yes, it will be after school closes.
Does anyone know the last day of school?
June 13th.
Oh, that is the last day of school, June 13th.
June 13th, June 14th.
Lauren?
I'm one of the 16 residents. I was thinking that maybe, you know, there could be some kind of cooperative to try to.
Yeah, we can help one another. You know, if someone wants to go out and make the trip to town or whatever, we could, it's six weeks, and I'm looking forward to a safe bridge for pedestrians and cyclists.
It's, I think the ends justifies the means, I feel, so. Any other questions for the Road Report? Okay. Assessors' report. They sent out a message today about, can you read that, please?
So there's the, they have submitted the signed Grand List Extension Request Letter to Property Valuation and Review, and are awaiting a response. This extension will still allow timely issuance of tax bills. We are revising our recommendations for Catalyst Patriot AP5 software, and would like the Select Board to approve cloud hosting. Quotes are attached, which you all got forwarded to you last week, I believe. See page 2, and please approve this option. This will increase the annual fee to $6,139 from $3,474. The reasons for this are, one, the estimated cost of upgrading the server to allow hosting on our in-house server are estimated to be as expensive as three years of cloud hosting; and, two, it has been recommended that it will be easier to manage Patriot updates and ongoing maintenance if we have it hosted on the cloud. Lisa will be working in the office on Monday each month, and as necessary, from home, and Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and alternate Wednesday mornings. That's it. So they're just looking for a decision to, again, shift the hosting to cloud hosting, which would update the fee from $3,474 annually to $6,139 annually.
And then our budget just starts in July. We knew that we were going to be paying a lot more money for this, right? I believe that we. Julie, can you speak to that? We, we had planned for, for more expense in that, in our budget, right?
I don't remember what exactly they had in their budget, but they did have, I think, originally a higher projected cost than what that first proposal was, yes.
Okay.
That's my recollection.
Okay. Frank?
If I recall, I was due out a consideration for software conversion concerns that you had to increase.
Well, they needed the new software one way or the other.
Right. They had, they had to go to the software, and now it was just a little bit whether they were going to upgrade or go this way, so.
And they said that the estimated cost of upgrading the server to allow for in-house hosting is going to be approximately the same amount as it would cost to be on the cloud, so.
So, does somebody want to make a motion to approve that, or does somebody have any reason why we shouldn't, or?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Town Clerk's memo. Good evening, Deb. How are you?
I'm doing good, everybody. How are you doing?
Good.
Good. I actually have nothing to report tonight.
Wow.
Okay. Everything is good, then, huh? Anybody have any que, anybody have any questions for Deb? Okay, then. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Have a good evening. Julie?
Your honor, we're here. Hi.
Good evening, Julie.
Two warrants, this week. Payable is $10,421.88. Accounts payable is $24,264, even. General funds, $10,952.44. Highway, $15,601.02. Waste water fund monies, $8,132.42. And then the only other thing that I have to report is that a few weeks ago, I received notice that the town of Pollitt was subject to a grant def review by the state of Vermont, and very shortly after submitting my response, they sent a letter. I have one copy attached on the desk there. It's an exit letter indicating that we complied with all relevant laws, regulations, and procedures under the grant agreement. And that's it.
All right. Well, good job to everyone that worked on the grant. Thank you.
I'll move that we approve payroll warrant 24062, and accounts payable warrant 24063.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any other questions for Julie? All right, thank you very much, Julie. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Good night.
Nothing from him tonight? Health officer? I did reach out to Jennifer Sullivan, and she said that she would be glad to take health officer again to be reappointed, so will somebody make a motion to reappoint Jennifer? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Jennifer. You're not even here listening. That's good. Do I need to sign this? Oh, let's see. Name it, slide bulletin.
I guess Kristen can probably fill out the rest of it.
Yeah.
And it looks like.
She'll have to meet with.
She'll have to sign it also.
Yeah, she'll have to meet with you, Deb, at some point, and, and sign her oath of office.
Okay, whenever she's available, she can stop in.
Waste water facility, we didn't get anything from, as of late, so everything seems to be going all right. Facilities report?
The only thing that I have was that, and I didn't get to it last meeting, but Martha had sent an email that following the Pollitt Historical Society event, that was upstairs in the town hall auditorium, it was apparent that the battery-powered shades that were installed up there need some attention, so I didn't know if one of our facilities people wanted to take a look at those and maybe figure out what needs.
New batteries.
Probably just batteries.
Just new batteries in the shades? Okay.
I don't know.
See if we can find somebody that would like to do that. Anything else? Everything okay at the library? Okay. Medway School District? Julie?
Uh, I don't have anything with me right now, sorry.
Okay.
I have to talk.
All right, thank you. Older unfinished business? Wow, real old, Julie. New business?
Yeah, wow.
Nothing. Public comment? Frank?
And the MRR program, just to bring everybody up to date, is that the audit was done. Jessica found inconsistencies in the data, and I found inconsistencies in the data that was incorrect. So Jeremy's has sent this stuff back, but it had some cross numbers associated, so we're not going to talk about that until we have the information back from the team that generated the numbers.
This is from the energy audits we got done.
Okay.
So Frank is just saying that we found a few errors in those, and so they're sorting that out.
Like Jessica notes, that they didn't take under consideration H-back work that was already in there.
Okay. So they worked through that. Lauren?
Hi. Lauren's going to talk to the committee. Oh, okay.
I'd like to read a statement, because I can't rely on my memory to get it out.
Okay.
I wasn't happy with Harley's comment last month about correlating the window washing with transparency to the library, maybe more transparency. I actually think it's a lot more serious than that. I was happy to see Julie go over the warrant with the board, line by line, last month, this month, every month I've come to your meetings, which has been several. And this is the way, this is the practice we exercise on my tenure on the school board for 10 years. I'm a concerned citizen of the town, and I'm also a library board trustee. I believe we have a duty to handle our town's money carefully and with transparency, and I feel compelled to advance this to the state level for some guidance. I believe that we're violating open meeting laws with our current practices. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to us. Bill?
I have a question about the veterans, the banners, like they got in Bramble.
Uh-huh.
Charlie King said he had mentioned, I checked with Meyer, and he said that the towns are got the options, they can put the banners up on the poles or whatever, and the firemen would help put them up.
We, we did see.
The peasants.
We did have a message from Charlie, it was a couple of years ago or so, but we didn't have any feedback. No one was interested at that meeting. But if you wanted to get an outline of that again from Charlie, we could certainly come back and see, now that you have some options on, on how to, how to go about it, that, you know, that the firemen would, would be willing to put it up, so.
Talk to Charlie King and get an outline of what he's talking about, and then.
Have him mail me the form letter again, and that, since you have options of how we can get them installed and stuff like that. I've seen him in a lot of now.
And my daughter's going up in Bramble, and then they wanted some Civil War veterans, so.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up, and we can, we can continue.
That's all I got.
Okay. Ashley?
Yes, Ashley, wait. I'm here about a letter, I'm from the administrators.
Yeah.
And I question, and I looked up in the bylaws here and everything, the zoning bylaws do not give the select men the power to change a meaning of any word or definition of shipping containers to be conceded as structures. You don't have that power to change that. And that's what I'm questioning, and that's why I questioned this letter. I've had those shipping containers on my property for over 20 years. It's never been a problem before, but now, all of a sudden, I'm supposed to get a permit for them? And then, and then what's next? Then they're going to be taxing me on them? They're temporary structure, that you want to call them structures, but they're shipping containers. And it's very upsetting to come back, I've been in Florida for two and a half months to have, have any operation, but come back to something like this.
Can you comment on how that was returned to the Planning Commission, how?
It's not, the zoning administrator is an employee of the town. So the Select Board, we've had, we've had situations in the past where someone has had an issue with something regarding zoning, and the Select Board is not the body to decide about zoning. What happens if you have a complaint about zoning is you write a letter about it, and you, and you send it to, you send it to the zoning administrator, and then it can be advanced to the Development Review Board.
She already quoted, and.
And there's our.
What I just read from you is quote from the zoning bylaws. And they, the Select Board doesn't have that. It says the town of Pollitt has determined, the town of Pollitt has considered shipping containers and storage boxes and alike as structures. That is not your decision to make. That needs the vote of the town.
It's up to the zoning administrator to interpret the bylaws. And if, if someone thinks that the zoning administrator has interpreted the bylaws wrongly, they can put a complaint to the zoning administrator. This happened some time ago, remember, regarding that quarry? And then it got determined by the Development Review Board. So that's the correct process about it. Nancy has a.
Nancy?
Yes, so I have two comments on the, on the comment that was just made. The first being that he identifies these as temporary structures, but yes, says they've been on his property for 20 years, so I question the word temporary. The other piece is if they have been on his property for 20 years, there is a 15-year exemption. So if he can verify that they've been on his property for 15 years, they would be considered pre-existing.
That was my argument.
And would not, and would not require to go through this permitting process. So if you can provide me the documentation that you've had them on the property for 15 years. 15 years, then you can totally just forget about that letter.
I don't know that I can actually come up with an actual bill of sale, but I can come up with the company I bought them from, and I bought them in 2001.
That's fine. If you can provide me with any kind of documentation that fills that requirement.
So that's exactly, that's exactly the reason that we went into this, is because people have bought them and not used them for temporary. One year they can use them, and after a year, that becomes a permanent structure. It's no different than a house trailer, always got to do, put tires on it, and you go this way.
You know, it kind of upset me because I've had them for so long, and I didn't need a zoning permit before, and then all of a sudden, I come home, face, I got to have a zoning permit.
Well, we've had, they're getting more and more popular, and people are keeping them longer than just a temporary structure, so we need to.
Because of the cost of construction.
Yeah, and it's not, as someone pointed out at the planning commission meeting, it's not fair if someone who builds a shed the same size as the shipping container has to get a permit, but then someone who gets a shipping container gets to not have to get a permit. So it's about being fair to everybody. It's possible that in the past, it wasn't enforced, and unfortunately, a number of things aren't always enforced. But then, if it's going to be enforced, it's got to be fair. Everybody's got, it's got to be even, so that's all I'm saying.
It had never come to light until just recently.
Yeah, it just came to light recently, that it hadn't been enforced up until this whole time. And so then, it was like, oh, well, I guess now we're going to.
I don't, I don't know what even on the books, and I helped draw the original zoning regulations.
Yeah.
It's been blanketed, and everyone in the town that has shipping containers have been, have been sent the same letter that you got.
Yeah. So, yeah, I wasn't single-bell, I wasn't saying that at all, but the letter starts out that the town of Politt, which is wrong, it's not necessarily the town of Politt. The town of Politt would be a vote of the town of Politt. You five people up there, you do represent the town of Politt, but not in situations like this. One of our bylaws, when we originally drew up the zoning regulations, was that any changes had to be come before a vote of the full town of Politt. And that disappeared back in 1997. I don't know how it disappeared, but it disappeared. But, you know, it's just, on the lighter side, I mean, you can put a saddle on a cow or a pig, but it doesn't make it a horse.
Is there any other public comment tonight?
I'll make a motion adjourned. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a good evening.